Good afternoon and welcome to our last meeting of June. We want to welcome everyone in our council chambers and those of you watching us on our Electric City Television. Looks like we got a break from the heat this afternoon, so we'll take advantage of it and start with our meeting. The invocation tonight will be given by Councilmember Buck Roberts in respects to his class will be led by Councilmember Tony Stewart. Please rise.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for all the blessings you have bestowed upon us. May you help us tonight and we, as councilmen, make wise decisions for this great city. We pray that you will protect our policemen, our firemen, and our military. Be with them, put your guiding hand upon them. And dear Lord, watch after Mr. Kirby as he leaves us. I know he'll do a good job. We thank you. In his name we pray. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies, special recognition tonight, speaking of Mr. Kirby and Mr. Roberts' prayer, we have one of our fellow councilmembers who will be leaving us for green of pastures. But I'd like to say just a few things about Steve. I'm gonna ask that he eventually makes his way down here. But I suppose you know that...
All right.
Come on down.
I got a little worried about Buck's praying about me leaving. I reassure you, but I'm not sick.
He's not sick. A lot of you know, and I think it's been in the paper, we talked about last meeting, Steve will be leaving us for, he'll become the master in equity for Anderson and Oconee Counties and the 10th Circuit. And it's a full-time judicial position. He will be Judge Kirby. I think he gets sworn in Wednesday. And just, you know, Steve has been on this council for 24 years. From 1978 to 1984, he was at seat two. And his current seat, which was from 1998 to 2016, he was on, obviously was seat one. And he was mayor pro temp two times doing that stint on council. The one thing that, and I say this publicly, that Steve is a very critical thinker. I appreciate during my 10 years here, the vision that he's had for some of the things that we've done and some of the tough things that we've done over the last 10 years and really over the last, his whole career of the last 20, 25 years. And so people like Steve who give their time and their talent to an organization like this, you cannot measure what he's done for our city. And some of the things that even going forward, his footprint will be on our council for many years to come. So I would like, I want Steve to say something, but I want to open it up to maybe my fellow councilmembers. Do you guys have anything that you might want to say?
I'd be more than call him judge, so I can call him judge now.
Well, I would certainly like to say that we will certainly miss you because I will certainly miss your humor. Sometimes you, you know, we didn't always agree on everything, but the one thing I always really did appreciate with you is your conservative values and your legal thoughts and expertise that you lent to this council. I know you'll serve Anderson County very well and wish you well.
Well, Steve, I'd just like to say, you know, my 16 years on being on city council, I know you and I haven't always agreed on everything, but we've always agreed to disagree. And I think over the years, as we got to know each other better, you know, we talked more frequently and talked a lot about a lot of issues. And you shed some light on issues that sometimes some of us don't think about. You just bring a different perspective to that. And I would like to think that when you've done that, you've helped make me a better councilmember as well by thinking along some of those same type of things instead of having tunnel vision, looking at the overall picture. So I really appreciate the guidance. I feel like the guidance and leadership that you've not only shown this council, but have shown me personally. So thank you very much.
I don't know what to say about Steve. He is second in tenure to me.
That's right.
And I served two terms, two times with him. He came on and served how many terms? Couple. And then went away. He missed me so much. He ran again and served many more years. Yeah. And as Tony has just said, I have learned a lot from you. Now, Steve has a tough mind, but believe it or not, he has a big heart.
Yes, he does.
He has a big heart for this city, for this community. I've learned a lot from you and I have just really, you brought up many things that many of us didn't think of. And whatever you thought of, you stuck to your point. And we sometimes learn from it. So Steve, we're gonna miss you and I wish you the best of luck. I know you're gonna be a good judge, so congratulations and best luck to you and your family.
All I can say is we're gonna miss you. We really are. And what she says is absolutely true. There are a lot of times that we might disagree, there are a lot of times we'll sit there and fuss and cuss at one another, but at the same time, we understand that a lot of times when you say something, you've done a lot of thought, you've put a lot of thinking into it, and we appreciate that. And we appreciate what you've done for this city. And we do wish you nothing but the best.
I think I'll bring up the point. You've noticed everyone said that we disagree with Steve. He's the one that kind of... But in my short two years, I also have learned quite a bit from you. And you talk about the different perspective that he brings. And the one thing I can say is his perspective that he brings that is so different and thoughtful is for the betterment of everyone in here.
That's right.
And we're all, you know, it was my honor to serve with you, but it's, the city has done well by having you as their councilmember. So, yes, sir.
We've got a couple gifts. This is our turn in life of the team. Landy, you want to come up? Landy, will you say something?
Well...
From the management team.
I will, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. And Steve, that's very true. A lot of these memories that you're hearing tonight, they've already, they live in the TV perspective. We will always, from our office, we will always miss you in two very special ways. Number one, we're gonna miss you every second, fourth Monday. We have something here that's gonna help you be nice and comfy and happy when you're watching us on TV. And number two, we're gonna miss you every payday. Because for those of you who don't know, Mr. Kirby paid us a visit every payday and he just, he did a head count, make sure that all of us were... We're gonna miss you in that regard, but we're gonna...
Already got your plans, Mike.
But we're gonna miss that thought-provoking conversation as well. And we thank you for being our own devil's advocate. I mean that in a righteous way. This, if we can undo it properly so it's not upside down, is meant to help you remember all of these accomplishments, all of these accomplishments over your tenure. And keep you warm. Cause each is...
One more thing, we got a lot of other stuff. I want to pull all the things out, but I do want to give you a key to the city. And you have to come through the front door now.
I hate this before.
Well, I do appreciate all the kind words and it's been my honor to have served in this council for 24 years. And it's been my honor to serve with each of these people and others who've been before them. As Bea said, she's the most senior person here and I'm second, so been around a good while. But we're certainly blessed in our city with a great group of employees from our police and fire to our management to public works and the whole, the whole group is great. And I always will believe that when we make decisions down here, it really is about the people who live here and have their businesses here. And we ought to always remember that when we make a decision. But I do thank you and I'll miss seeing you every two weeks, but we'll all be fine. I'm leaving with the city in good hands and I'm sure these folks will all continue to make Anderson the best city in South Carolina.
Before we move on, I would like to recognize we do have a former mayor, Richard Shirley here. Richard, any comments?
I will be very brief, but if y'all think y'all send him up to the courthouse without compensation, y'all crazy. I'm not taking him without some money. That's what I mean. Steve and I were sworn in to city council together. And over the weekend, I had an occasion to be looking for something and I found the picture of when we were sworn in, all four of us that were sworn in at that time. And it's amazing how well our wives have aged and it's even the more amazing how poorly Steve and I have aged. So I did not bring that picture with me. But I just, if you'll just let me echo very quickly that this has been a man who has been a critical thinker since he came down here in 1978. And his service to my neighborhood, it's been my pleasure to vote for him for a number of years. And Steve, we are looking forward to having you at the courthouse. And you have been a marvelous city councilmember. And I'm just looking forward, I get to see you now every day instead of just every other week. So we're looking forward to that. And I thank you for letting me say that.
Thank you, Mayor. I will turn it over now to our acting fire chief, Randy Brachter. Randy has a swearing-in ceremony.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, I appreciate you giving us opportunity to speak in a few minutes. And Councilman Kirby, I'd like to say that it's been a pleasure working here and being here. And one of the things that I was told early on when I started presenting information to the council about the end of management team, I guarantee you, Councilman Kirby's gonna be the ones gonna ask you the questions. So I tried to prepare myself, but you know, that's the thing I don't mind. You know, you're taking care of the city and taking care of business and I've enjoyed being here with you all these years and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
We have Mackenzie Ashley here tonight swearing in. Mackenzie is a 2015 graduate of Belton High School and he's also a graduate of the College Career Center up in Williamson. He's a volunteer firefighter at Ebenezer and he has met all the qualifications for his swearing in tonight. Mackenzie, do you have any family here you'd like to recognize?
Yes, sir. I have a mom and dad and my sister, brother Marvin, and very few kids and my girlfriend. And then some family friends from Fort Lauderdale.
Hey.
Glad to have you. To prove a present right name, repeat that for me. I...
I...
Do solemnly swear that in my duty as a Anderson firefighter...
Do solemnly swear that in my duty as a Anderson firefighter...
To serve my commanding officers with respect and dignity...
To serve my commanding officers with respect and dignity...
To serve and protect the city of Anderson with compassion, courage, and integrity...
To serve the city of Anderson with courage, compassion, and integrity...
And uphold the laws, the rules, and the regulations of the United States of America...
To uphold the laws and regulations of the United States of America...
The state of South Carolina...
The state of South Carolina...
And the city of Anderson...
The city of Anderson...
So, and we got it. Congratulations, wonderful.
Welcome aboard.
Next, we have a presentation in regards to the Anderson County Comprehensive Plan Process. And I'm gonna ask Maurice McKenzie to come up and kick this off and introduce our guest. Maurice?
Thank you. The Comprehensive Land Use Plan is a document that acts as a guide for the growth of a community. Basically, it focuses on long-term land use goals and policies. And from a city perspective, we have a comprehensive plan, Anderson County has a comprehensive plan. If you have a zoning ordinance in the state of South Carolina, you are required to have a comprehensive land use plan. Therefore, we have that. But it is required to be revised periodically. And we, as a city, we're currently undergoing that process of revision. We have compiled our data from the staff and we will soon be utilizing the services of the Appalachian Council of Governments to help facilitate the public input process. And we'll be keeping you posted over the next three months or so when those public input sessions will be. Those are very important when revising a comprehensive land use plan. After that's complete, the Council of Governments will then provide to us a completed document that we will bring to you for review and consideration and hopeful approval around the end of the year. And that's where we are as a city from the comprehensive land use update standpoint. I did not want to steal the county's thunder because it does say Anderson County process up there, but Anderson County, they are also going through this process as well. And we have with us Michael Foreman and Jeff Parkey with Anderson County. And Michael is going to provide to you a quick update on where they are with their process. And he, I believe, is going to all the municipalities and letting everyone know so he can get the word out as far as what their process is. So I'll turn it over to Michael.
Thank you, Maurice. Hello, Counselor. My name is Mike Foreman. I appreciate everybody's time, especially Maurice. We've been working closely with the city planning department to get this comprehensive plan up and running. As Maurice mentioned, we are also in our comprehensive plan process a little bit further along. We're at the point now where we're going to each municipality in the county. And just letting y'all know that the plan will be coming forward. We're going to have seven town hall style meetings countywide. We invite everybody to come out and that's mainly what we're here today to let you know about. We're going districts one through seven. We have seven districts in the county, so we'll be going one to each individual district. And I think for District One, which is County Council District One, which is essentially the city and a little bit outside, a little bit north as well, we're probably looking at either at Anderson University for our meeting place or potentially the YMCA if we can get the space. I think there's a yoga class happening that night, so we might have to work around that. But either way, just wanted to let you know that that meeting will be Thursday, July 21st at 6:00 PM. And we do invite you to come and please take a look at our website, AndersonCountySC.org for any updates, for all the information for all seven of the council town hall meetings. And we're hoping to have the Comprehensive Plan done by early September. And this is a collaborative process, so that's why we do appreciate the work we've done with the city moving forward with council as well. So with that, I'll leave it open to any questions y'all might have, but otherwise, we look forward to seeing you when we have our meetings.
Now, this Comprehensive Plan has helped me understand a little bit better. It's to make sure that the zoning is correct, it deals with zoning throughout the county, I guess. Is that what we're looking at?
Yeah, it basically boils down to three separate, or three main ideas. One is that we want to stay in compliance with state law, so we were required to have a Comprehensive Plan if you have zoning in your jurisdiction. So as Maurice touched on, that's absolutely correct. The main idea, though, is that it's a snapshot of current conditions for your jurisdiction. And it also gives you a future look using those current conditions, how you think growth will occur moving forward over the next 10, 20 years.
I know a lot of the, this city seat is in Council District Two as well. And I guess some of the things that I see representing Ward Four, which is in District Two as well, is you may have some things in the city on this street and right across the street, you're in the county. You've got different zoning, so it makes it hard for development and revitalization. And I would just like for us to think forward as, especially in our inner-city neighborhoods, that making sure that the city and the county is on one accord because you don't want to have something totally different here and something totally different right across the street from one another. It just makes it hard for revitalization and doing infill and revitalizing the neighborhoods.
Yes, sir. And I think we're, and relationships we're building with Ms. McConnell and with Maurice and his staff, I think we're moving forward on that, certainly.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions of Mr. Foreman?
What was the time of that meeting, on the 21st?
Yes, sir. It'd be at 6 o'clock and the location has yet to be set, but if you want to check the website or get, and we'll keep in touch with Mr. McKenzie as well. We'll get you up to date on that. And the District Two Town Hall, which is Ms. Gracie Floyd's district, as Councilman previously mentioned here, that'll be on the 25th at 6:00 PM. But we'll get you all the times and dates and we'll coordinate that with Mr. McKenzie so y'all are made aware exactly when that will be.
Good. Anything else, guys? Thank you, Mr. Foreman. Appreciate you coming.
Appreciate you.
The minutes of our June 13th meeting have been distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to that meeting? Not hearing any. Do I have a motion to approve?
So, who?
First by Mr. Stewart.
Second.
Second by Mr. Buck Roberts. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The minutes of June 13th passed unanimously. We have three items of old business and the first item is request second and third reading of ordinance 16-10 adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2016-2017. Ms. McConnell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to say thank you again to our finance division, Peggy Maxwell, Margo Martin, Tamara Lindley, and Elizabeth Dicey, as well as all of your division heads who've done the work to bring you a balanced budget. In addition to that, we want to thank you all for the input you gave us. Each council member attended a budget work session and we had the benefit of your wisdom. In the end, we've brought forward a balanced budget that represents no tax increase, no fee increases, and no reduction in the quality services that we provide to our citizens. The budget total for all the funds is $58,394,415. And it does include a 2% cost of living increase. We've had no additional questions, or I think we've answered any additional questions that you all may have had, but we've had no additional questions from the public raised since the first reading. And we bring this to you for second and third reading tonight.
Thank you. We have talked about it and we've looked at it as a council and I appreciate our echo, Ms. McConnell's words in regards to her management team. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council?
I would just like to say, I appreciate the work that our management and our city staff has done to making sure that our city taxpayers, for those who of us that live in the city, don't have any tax increases or fee increases in the city unlike, you know, our predecessors at the county where we are gonna see a tax increase on our county side. But again, being good stewards of our dollars, I really appreciate that because that would have been a big burden if we would have had double hit from city and county tax increases.
Ms. Chapman?
And I'd just like to echo what Mr. Stewart has said, that, you know, I think I asked for some numbers based on previous tax increases since 2000. I think the city has actually decreased about two mils in that timeframe where the county has gone up slightly more and the school district has gone up significantly more. So with that, I just want to commend our staff and our employees who have continued to strive to look to new ways to reduce costs and still continue the type of services that we provide. So, thank you. With that, I'd like to make a recommendation. We approve it on second reading.
First by Mr. Chapman.
Second.
Second by Mr. John Roberts. I think John beat him to the punch, so...
He don't want... They made it there with the gun.
It's a Roberts, that's all that matters.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It passes unanimously on the second reading.
Make a motion, we do it on the third and final reading?
First by Mr. Buck Roberts.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lockridge. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It passes unanimously on the third and final reading. We have a budget.
Yay.
Very good.
It's always a good thing.
Our second item of old business is request second and third reading of ordinance 16-12, the rezon 826 South McDuffie Street from RF5 Single Family Residential to NP Neighborhood Professional. Ms. McConnell?
This property was brought to us previously. It is a piece of property that has been occupied over the past as a residential dwelling and also as a commercial property. It is vacant at the time. Went before the Planning Commission in June and was unanimously recommended for approval for the rezoning. And there've been no additional calls or comments from the public since that, since you have heard it and since the Planning Commission. Please bear in mind that as Neighborhood Professional, which is a zoning category is being requested, that this is a low-intensity type of commercial zoning, like business offices, medical services, and it still will permit single-family residences. So with all of that, we would recommend approval this evening. And it certainly would have to meet all building codes in order to be reoccupied again for some future use, which is yet to be determined.
Thank you.
And this isn't a historic district, so it'd have to meet all the historic...
That would be correct.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Ms. Lockridge.
What has this been used for commercially in the past?
It's been everything from a florist to a law office, to some other type of business office. So it's been, it's had a variety of uses over the years.
Residential?
Residential as well, yes.
Residential as well.
Any other questions, comments?
It's in my district and I know it's been sitting vacant for a while and I think the owners have done a good job of making some progress of fixing it up. So I think it's really gonna be an improvement there on McDuffie Street. So I would make a motion that we approve it.
First by Mr. Stewart.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lockridge. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It passes unanimously on the second reading.
Mayor, I make a motion, we approve it on the third reading?
First by Mr. John Roberts.
Second.
Second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It passes unanimously on the third and final reading. Our last item of old business is request second and third reading of ordinance 16-13 establishing the 2016, September 2016 Special Election. Ms. McConnell?
Well, as we stated earlier, this is the special election needed that will fill the vacancy held currently by Mr. Kirby. This means that Mr. Kirby will have an unexpired term which will end June 30th of 2018. The ordinance, excuse me, specifies the schedule of this election and the beginning with the special election date, which will be Tuesday, September 27th. And that means that the filing period for candidates will be noon Friday, July 15th through noon Monday, July 25th. And remember, for any candidate who wants to file for that position, the process is initiated at the Anderson County Registration and Elections Office, which is at 301 North Main. Once that piece of the process is done, then... Once that piece of the process is done, then the candidate would come to City Hall and pay the $200 finding fee, excuse me, filing fee with the city clerk and treasurer. That sets the schedule for the next special election.
Thank you, ma'am. Any comments, questions?
Last hand.
Make a motion. We approve ordinance 16-13 on second reading.
Second.
First by Mr. Stewart. Second by Mr. Buck Roberts. Further discussion? All those in favor, sigh.
Aye.
It passes unanimously on the second reading.
Make a motion. We accept it on third and final.
First by Mr. Chapman.
Second.
Second by Mr. John Roberts. All those in favor, sigh.
Aye.
Opposed. It passes unanimously on the third and final reading. New business. We have one item of new business, and that is to request consideration of an application for participation in the Business Assistance Program for Anderson School of Dance. Ms. McConnell?
Mr. Mayor and Council, it's always good news for us when we get to share the fact that we either have a new business that's opening in the city of Anderson, or we have a business that's been successful enough that they have the opportunity to expand. What we have tonight is a business, the Anderson School of Dance, that has the opportunity to expand their business and their foothold in our city. And what we bring to you tonight is a result of your passage of the, or adoption of the Business Assistance Program, which you established back in January. The purpose of the Business Assistance Program was to give additional tools in our toolbox to help businesses either expand their footprint or their business operation, or to offer an incentive that enticed or encouraged that private investment or new investment or reinvestment to occur. You allocated $100,000 to that fund, and we have dollars available in the fund now, as well as the benefit of adding more to that fund to sustain it based upon the revenue growth that the city enjoys during the year. We have approved several businesses previously for these funds. The reason that this one comes to you tonight is because the amount requested is above $10,000, and that requires city council's approval as opposed to just the staff evaluation and review of the applications. As a reminder of a couple of things that are, the criteria that are used, all of the applications we receive are evaluated on the same criteria. Since it is an economic development tool, that criteria includes things like the job creation. It includes if it is something that is likely to stimulate additional investment in the adjacent areas. If it is a type of business that satisfies a market niche or something that is a unique niche in our marketplace, that's of value to us. We also look at if there are beneficial impacts to an area that the city has recognized as being important to us. If it's in the TIF district, if it's in a master-planned area, if it is in a neighborhood which we've identified as a priority, things of that nature are the types of criteria that classify it as an economic development project. You had several categories in the Business Assistance Program. This particular one is for the interior outfit, and that means taking a project that would occupy a building and make it occupancy-ready or retail-ready. And the amount of the application that is before us tonight, and the staff is recommending, is $39,056. I believe the applicants we have with us in the audience as well tonight, Anna Giles and Catherine Yon. And I'd like to ask Arlene Young, who's been working with this new program, to come forward and share any other information with you or to answer any questions that you might have about this application.
Thank you, Linda. I'm excited to be here today to talk with you about Anderson School of Dance. They opened in 1972. They actually first operated out of our Recreation Center. They moved in 1983 into our downtown, so they are certainly iconic for our community, particularly for our downtown. I hear lots of times when I talk about Anderson School of Dance, older people remembering. I remember when my mom would take me there, and we'd always go somewhere else in downtown while we were there. That's something special for them, that they always encourage the parents when they drop off their child to go in downtown and shop or dine while they're waiting for the child to get through. So I particularly appreciate that they are doing that with the parents and helping the rest of the businesses that they are neighbors to. They are expanding their operations. They are relocating to 219 East Benson Street. They have purchased this property, and they have a renovation budget that includes interior and exterior outfit. The program they're participating in for that interior outfit, they are eligible for 50% of those items that are repair items that are needed or code-compliant items that are needed that allow them to operate in the fashion that they need to. I think special note is that Catherine and Anna are both certified from Dance Masters of America. Didn't know that organization existed, but that is kudos to them for having that designation as well. As Linda explained, we do have selection criteria, so we've evaluated their application. We have a scoring formula, and based on that scoring formula, we are recommending, awarding them $39,056 for their total investment of what they're doing. This represents about 10.9% public investment versus private investment.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, Mr. Stewart?
I know their new location is in my council seat, so I appreciate, you know, you guys willing to relocate and over there on East Benson Street. But just a couple of things, a couple of points I'd like to make is, one, I know why we're awarding, or potentially awarding them $39,000 tonight, I think is important. You know, the council know, I think their total budget that they're getting is close to $45,000 because I think they've got funded under some other programs as well. So $39,000 is just not the total budget that is being awarded to the School of Dance. I think they got a facade grant and architectural fees and some other things under the other different programs, so I just want to make sure everybody knew that as well. And then I just wanted to make sure, I know when we looked at other applications in the past, because we talked about how much money, because this is grant, like grant dollars, where they don't have to pay back, just want to make sure that we've exhausted all of our other resources, because I know with other applicants, when the money has been over $10,000, we had said, well, there's some other low-interest loan programs out there, and I can't think of the name of them. I think Erica Craft does one of them and the other one. And I just wanted to make sure that we've explored all of those opportunities to help them before we, you know, do the grant. So I just want to make sure that we have done that. And we have or we haven't?
We have, yes.
Or they participate in?
Can I share with you the business development loan program? Yeah.
Yeah, yes. We, part of our protocol is when we have a business that's either expanding or is new to our community, we're going to make those people aware of every program that we have out there, whether it's grants, whether it's loans, whether it's assistance that they get from the building department by way of a courtesy inspection upfront. Any of those kinds of things are part of our standard operating procedure when it comes to making sure we can help somebody through the process. So, yes.
And just lastly, just want to make sure with this amount of money that potentially is being awarded tonight, it's not going to hinder our other applications that we have in the pipeline, because, you know, we want to make sure that other participants in the city of Anderson have an opportunity for these programs as well, instead of kind of putting the bulk of your nest of eggs in one nest. Just want to make sure that we've got enough to handle our other applications that's currently on file.
You're correct, Mr. Stewart. I mean, we still, we still do have money in our, in our fund before we ever put any additional dollars going forward. I know we did say that certainly when July 1st comes around, because you all made a commitment to continue to add to that fund so that it was sustainable, it doesn't mean in any given year that you have to give it all away. Now, we'd like to think that we're going to be so successful at recruitment that we do give it all away and keep replenishing that fund. But we're under no obligation to make sure that it gets all gone in one calendar or fiscal year or 12-month period. But we will see, I think, one of the things that I believe we've talked about is making sure that, like any new program, that we take the opportunity once, once we've gotten certain ways into this and have enough to evaluate, to make sure it's accomplishing what we wanted it to accomplish in the way that we wanted it to accomplish. And I think that's a good, a good indication of if it's doing what you intended it to do. But there's money in the, in the fund to accommodate this request tonight, as well as other requests that are in our, that we hope will continue to come in.
Ms. Chapman?
I have a couple of things. Just the 26,000 that's been awarded, is that including the additional facade grant and the other things that are being added?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Awarded?
Yes. The 26,000 includes the facade grant, the sign, and the assistance with the sign and the design assistance.
In, in the future, because I was not aware of that either until you just brought that up, that it'd be helpful to us, I think, if every item, because it's coming out of that $100,000 fund that we had, so that would be helpful in the future to have that additional information in there. But the 102 that they're investing, 102, 778, that they're putting in, is all of that amount money that's contracted directly by a contractor? That's not any sweat equity value amount?
No, and of course, the renovation budget is 209,000. These are just eligible items for this program.
I was just making sure that they're not, they're not sweat equity valued items. They're directly to a contractor that's being done.
Yes, they are.
And then, I guess, in, leading on to Mr. Stewart's comment about, you know, I still think we need to come up with some type of cap amount so that in the future, we can, we can build this fund as much as we can so that we can have, so if multiple projects come along further, we can have money set aside rather than just knowing that we're going to replenish it every, every, I think, July or whatever. But I'd like to see us move into trying to set some type of cap for that. But I think it's a great project. I wish them well in their new location and appreciate your contribution downtown thus far.
Anything else, comments, Dr. Thompson?
How much money will we be awarding to this funding on next year? Did we say any special amount?
It's basically, go ahead. It's basically? It's $100,000. You seeded the fund with $100,000.
I know we did it this year. Did we say we'd do that every year or?
Going forward, it'll be 10% of all the new development revenue that the city gets.
So it's yet to be determined.
Well, we counted the $100,000.
$100,000.
Is what we've put in the, put in the budget as our estimate, yes.
It could be higher.
It may be. We would hope that this, this is the kind of thing that we hope stimulates more such activity.
I'm hoping that this would be an incentive for others who are thinking of building, renovating, lifting their particular business, would be encouraged that we would have some incentive for them to do that.
That's correct.
That's why I was asking how much money we would have for next year and how many, I'm sure, do we have any applicants on file right now?
We have some people that we're talking with, yes.
Anything else, guys?
I'm hoping that we approve this money to give to the dancing group of?
Anderson School of Dance. $39,000.
$39,056, yes.
First by Dr. Thompson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lockridge. My only comment is, is that the school was established in 1972. You ladies have aged well since 1972. All those in favor, sigh. Opposed. It passes unanimously, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Administered briefing, Ms. McConnell?
Upcoming events. Well, tonight, given the hour, you will have time to make it to Carolina Renn Park. We've had a wonderful weekend of Shakespeare in the park. The play Much Ado About Nothing will be shown again, excuse me, will be performed again this evening at 8:00. And anticipating that we might have another shower like we did earlier today, if that occurs, then we'll be able to go on with the performance in Renn Pavilion. So certainly, I hope you have the opportunity to enjoy downtown and an exciting performance. It's very well attended this weekend.
Saw it last night. Very good.
Last night. We also have upcoming next week. Our offices will be closed on Monday for Independence Day, and that'll get us started with the month of July. That's all we have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
If I may add, I just, the car show this past Saturday was, I think, the biggest turnout. It was by far the best weather we've had in years, but I think that we had a total of 320 cars from all over multiple areas, including out of state.
Wow.
So we were very pleased and appreciative of the downtown, or the Main Street program that put that on and Kerry Jones, so.
Very good. Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
First by Mr. Lockridge. Everybody wants to stay? Everybody, Mr. Roberts, John Roberts. All those in favor, sigh.
Aye.
Opposed. We stay on adjourned.